Councilman Jindal.
President.
Councilman Lenart.
Here.
Councilman Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Protem Daly.
Here.
Mayor Duper.
Present.
We have a forum.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mayor Protem Daly, or Mayor Daly, or whatever. We are all equal.
I thought we were in Chicago. There you go. Please join me in prayer. Father in heaven, we thank you for the many blessings you continue to provide us. We thank you that we live in a free country. We thank you that we live in a beautiful city with collaborative people. We pray now that you'll be with us as we deliberate issues and proposals before our city and guide our thinking and discussion in this thing's in your name. Please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I would like to add one item to the new business, please. And also, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce our new captain, Captain Peterson, so. You want to.
Welcome.
Lieutenant Smith, you want to give him a little introduction to our council and.
Yes. Um. Mayor, City Councilman, this is Captain Mark Peterson, our newly assigned captain. We're excited to work with him. He has a lot of experience from all over our department, so he brings a lot to our station, so we're excited.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move along to the. Yeah, the oral reports, participation from the public. And I have one speaker, Mr. Wiley, if you would come on down. Outside of that, if you're interested in making a public comment, please either come forward in person or signal via the Zoom conference. What you got for us, Dick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'd like to make a suggestion and a recommendation, if possible, that the city of Loma Linda and maybe along with Grand Terrace, talk with, maybe Colton also, talk with City of San Bernardino and say, if you can't keep the music between the freeways, then something should be done. Because I know Conrad had said that they should be over by midnight. And they'll ramp up quarter midnight, and then they die down. One o'clock, they ramp up, and then they shut down. And, I mean, it's, it's not all the music, it's the bass. And I've heard this for quite a while until I found out what it is. I thought it was maybe the university or the academy having some type of dance or outside get-together. But, I mean, if you can hear it, I figure it's five miles away. That's bad for somebody's ears. Sure, it brings a lot of money, but they can control it within that frame. So I know, I've heard the ones from Grand Terrace making the comment, they were very upset. And I think some are coming, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot more. So I think now is the time to suggest to them to nip it in the bud. And we're not saying you have to do away with it, but that may be an alternative if they can't keep it there. There's no excuse to have it over. I mean, my windows are shut. It's not that loud, but I know what's going on. So if I can hear it, the other people in our complex can hear it. And we're not in line, direct line, like Conrad is. But if they're willing to put a monitoring station up there, that's gotta tell you something. So if San Bernardino doesn't care, then maybe something needs to be done. So I appreciate that.
Of course, thank you. Okay, moving on to our scheduled items. Oh, yes, sir, Milford.
Sorry, just real quick. Milford Harrison, I wanted to remind all of you that everybody here is invited to our forum on the, on April 27 at ESRI at their beautiful dining room. And we look forward to having a report from the city of Loma Linda, the city of Grand Terrace, and the city of Redlands. And we'd love to have all of you there. In addition to that, I would like to urge each of you to attend your new Chamber of Commerce, your Chamber of Commerce back in session. Last Wednesday we met, and I think there were 12 people there. But, and nobody from the city, and I just really feel that we need to get behind them and help boost this and get it going again. And Karen did not pay me to say that. It's my own belief. Thanks a lot.
Of course, thank you.
Milford, who's the current, who are the current officers of the chamber?
Victor Miller is the president, but he's gonna have to step aside because of health reasons. So they're in, Karen, they're reorganizing, right? So they're trying to get things going and get it up to speed. We had a great presentation by the fire department on chest compression saving people's lives. It was excellent. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to scheduled items, we already did number one. So we'll move on to item 1.1, the proclamations. Tonight we have two. One for DMV Donate Life Month. And I, and I'm not sure, are you here for that one? Okay, awesome, come on down. And I don't have your name written down anywhere, I'm sorry.
I'm Ina Strickland.
Ina, nice to meet you. So we do have a proclamation from the city of Loma Linda. Whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. Whereas more than 100,000 individuals nationwide and more than 20,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, 17 people die out each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in the Hispanic, Latino, and African American communities. And whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. And whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others. And whereas organ donors saved more than 40,000 lives last year, the most ever. And whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical condition. And whereas being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency. And whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org. Or for Spanish speakers, www.donevidaCalifornia.org. Whereas California residents can sign up to be a person who donates organ, eye, and tissue when applying for renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. And whereas California residents interested in saving life through living kidney donation may visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Loma Linda hereby proclaims National Donate Life Month, the month of April 2022. Is hereby proclaimed DMV Donate Life Monk, Month in the city of Loma Linda. And in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes online or when applying for, in renewing their driver's license ID card at the DMV. Signed on this date. So if I now remember correct, you have a family history with this.
I am a living donor. I donated a kidney 35 years ago to my daughter, Sarah. Sarah's now 38. She's on her third kidney transplant. And that was thanks to two families who at probably one of the worst times of their lives donated the organs of their sons. And thanks to that, my daughter got a kidney second and third time. The second time was at Loma Linda Children's Hospital. I appreciate after two years being back here, thank you. And I appreciate the proclamations supporting organ, eye, and tissue donation. It's very easy. You can donate a living, as a living donor, but you can also go through the DMV saying yes. Or online, like you said, donatelifeCalifornia.org or donevidaCalifornia.org. So I appreciate it. There's a big need for it. And I appreciate us, that you always have supported us year after year after year. Thank you.
Of course. So come on down and let's give you this proclamation. Maybe you'll have to bring your daughter in one year.
She hates being a, my prop. Yeah, even at her age is my thing, and I respect it.
Yeah. Well, thank you and congratulations. Thank you for all your work. Okay, our next proclamation is for Provider Appreciation Day, May 6, 2022. Whereas childcare aware of the American and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day. And whereas over half of the children under age six nationwide are estimated to spend some time in a non-parental care arrangement on a weekly basis, which provides critical enrichment opportunities and nurtures development for children of all backgrounds and is a vital building block of our state economy. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has created tremendous hardship for childcare providers and the families of California who depend on them, who have continued to meet the needs of families while risking their health and financial stability to remain open. And whereas California recognizes these hardships and has provided much-needed relief to providers to help sustain the viability of childcare and promotes quality care information through the Childcare Advocate Program, CCAP, which provides information to parents, childcare providers, employers, educators, and community groups. And whereas our future depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Support for high-quality care represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Loma Linda hereby proclaim May 6, 2022 as Provider Appreciation Day in Loma Linda and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work. And I don't think we have anyone here to receive this, so we will get that to them. Okay, moving on to item number two, public hearing on Council Bill O-2022-02. This is introduced on first reading and set the second reading to amend Chapter 8.12 of the refuse collection, recycling, and disposal of the Loma Linda Municipal Code.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to request to continue this item to the next meeting on May 10, please.
Okay, item continued. The next thing we have on the agenda is the consent calendar. Yeah, first.
I will second, but I'd like to briefly pull items I, 6, 7, and 8.
Okay.
Okay, I-6, Fire Department Report. And I apologize, I try to get to you before I have questions, but I just did my homework this afternoon, so I wasn't able to. And, and the question is a simple one, but when I see that, that we had 262 calls for medical assistance and traffic collisions, are, are we having more and more problems with that? Because these numbers seem to be growing to me, but I haven't been tracking them.
They don't sound significantly higher. I'd have to go back and look at the stats over a long time. But as I did the annual stats, I think I sent an annual report last month or something. Our stats continue to grow slightly, but not significantly. So as, you know, population growth and we get more people, and especially now, you'll probably see a little bit of spike now that, especially in traffic collisions and stuff, as things are now opened up again. So probably if you're like looking over the last year or two, yeah, definitely say our traffic collisions are probably up, but probably not up over what they were pre-COVID. Because obviously, you know, with people driving our streets again, the amount influx, I'm sure they've gone up over the last few months, definitely, but.
At some point, I'd like to meet with you and look at the trends. And I don't know what to do with it, but it just seems like for a small city like ours, we've got a lot of problems.
Yeah, absolutely. I can, we can meet anytime and go over all the stats. I can pull any numbers that you feel you want to look at, we can go over those.
Good, thank you. On I-7. Actually, my questions for. I-7 and I-8 are the same.
Yes.
There's no map.
Map.
And so I'm trying to visualize just exactly what's happening here.
Yes. On, on item number seven, this is the Area D.
Okay.
Where, where we going to create a, a super pad. Right now, there's, there's one 72, 79 acre of land that they want to create a super pad so they can put the street.
This is on the north side of, of Area D?
No, it's on the, it's in Area D, south of Redlands Boulevard.
Well, no, I know Area D, but a lot of it's already developed. I just drove through it today.
This is to the west of Lenar.
Okay, okay.
And so what they plan to do is they, they create super pads so that on the north side will be condo, the, in the middle will be a, 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 a big lot. A subdivision.
Yeah.
And so they do a, a super pad first, so that they're gonna do, start grading. And then they will come back and, and create a, a track map for all the individual lots.
So super pad means they're gonna grade everything down so it's level, and then they can begin to develop the.
Yes, sir.
Track.
Put in the, the street, I mean, create the street, and then start putting the sewer, water, storm drain.
Okay. And, and immediately behind the VA clinic.
Yes.
They're doing a lot of development. That's different and separate.
Correct. That's 57 condominium projects. They're starting construction.
And that's separate from this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So that's number seven.
And so when they, when they, so this is permission to grade it and create a pad.
Correct.
And then it'll come back to us before they develop the track?
Correct.
Okay.
So they are, they in the process of taking that, the individual lots to, and commission, and eventually we'll come back to it.
Okay. And I-8, same thing?
On the number eight, if you look at the map on, on the back page, this is the, the parcel at the northwest corner of Redlands and Richardson.
It's the Highway Patrol Station.
Huh?
This is the Highway Patrol Station.
No, 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 no. This is, this is Richardson and Redlands, so it's I Institute, the one that started.
Oh, okay.
What happened is, there's two parcel, they used, and they wanted to remove that parcel, so they call lot merger, they, they just erase the line and become one big lot.
Okay. What, what's the status on the Highway Patrol Station? You haven't heard?
They already start putting construction fencing and they have a construction trailer, and guess what? They broke into.
Gotta save the Highway Patrol. Okay, so basically.
Stealing from cops?
To, to come back to the map, the dotted line is now removed.
Correct, that's it.
Okay. And, and we, we talked about this a little bit last night, but the status of, of that ophthalmology clinic, I mean, they, it looks like they made it about five feet and then it stalled. Do we know anything about why that is?
No, sir.
Okay.
They pushed, they pushed me very hard to get that project.
Waiting on Edison also, huh?
And, and then.
And then at one time, there was discussion about there would be a restaurant or something on the bottom level?
Yes, yes.
Is that still part of the plan?
I don't know, sir, but yes. I'm hoping I'm pushing for it.
Okay. So you'll keep us posted on how this is evolving? So basically, the action tonight is just removing the dotted line, so it's all one big lot?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a first and a.
Yes. Just wanted to understand how this works. Is the hours paid, is that while you're on duty? So even if there's nothing going on, are you still paid for that time?
Which, which item again?
12.
Item 12 is.
Sorry, 11. 11.
Yes, okay. I'm gonna let the chief explain that, that item 11, why we amend that agreement.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Question was.
So, so what the side letter agreement simply was, was a cleanup of language. All it changed is because, as, as you guys are aware, that we were running two division chiefs that work in 40-hour work weeks when we made this last contract. And so since then, we've, we've gotten rid of those positions and gone back to three shift battalion chiefs that are on shift all the time like the, the rest of the crews. And so because of that, so those two items that were in, didn't really, they worked well with the division chief way they were working, but it didn't work with now with the battalion chiefs. And so it was simply, it really doesn't change anything except it allows us to do what we were doing, but in the different deployment that we're in now.
Got it. So that makes a little more sense. When we're talking about on-call, emergency on-call, when it says hours paid, is that for time that the person is on-call or the time that the person actually has to come in?
Correct. So, so the way our, our old language was, is with our agreement with Colton, the division chiefs, they worked 40-hour work weeks, so during that time, they were responsible for coverage for Loma Linda. Then on nights and weekends, the city of Colton provided our, our coverage for battalion chiefs. However, we always had one of our battalion chief, or division chiefs on-call or standby in case that Colton battalion chief got overwhelmed, that he would know who to call and ring in. And so the way the language was, is that they got paid $186 a week to basically be on-call for that week. Well, now that we've gone to battalion chiefs, that's not needed. But what we do need are some instances, and this was something I was discussing with the fire marshal, is we need certain things like fire investigators time to time to be on standby and some others for other incidental stuff. And so we don't need, there's no incident where we need somebody to stand by for a week anymore. It might be, hey, on this Saturday, we don't have any investigators available. We don't have anybody that can come in, investigate fires. Can we do a standby? And can I have somebody stand by? So they'll only get paid for the hour and a half if it's during the week or for the two hour, just the two hours. So that's all they'll get paid for. Now, if they end up actually coming in and work and actually investigating fire, working, whatever, then they would start getting paid for being at work. But if they, they were standby for, on a Saturday, they get paid for two hours out of the whole 24 hours, and that's all they get paid for, if they never came in. No problem.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a first and a second.
The motion was to approve all the items on the consent calendar as submitted. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenart? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The items were approved on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Nothing under old business, moving under new builds, business. Do you want to do this emergency action first, or do you want to take it last? Okay, so let's move on to the JPIA conference.
Well, in the past, I'm pretty much the one who attend the JPIA board, director of meetings in the city of La Palma. And it usually on, I think it's Tuesday or Wednesday afternoon. So if any of you would like to be a delegate to, to attend the board meeting, you're welcome.
What's the date? What's the date? Yeah, okay. For, for me, it's dependent on the date, so if it's a day I'm available, I'll do it, but it just depends. I have to know. All right. Actually, it'd be kind of interesting, I think, hit the JPIA. We haven't done that in a little bit. All right, moving on to, we'll call it item 14, the emergency action.
So, so on item 13, you, we delegate.
Yeah, just depending, as long as it doesn't conflict with any of my other stuff. Okay.
Are you okay with that? Do you want to be on?
No, he's back to, he hasn't gone past 13 yet.
Got it. So I've gone a lot of these meetings, but I know nothing about the JPIA, so we would probably need to get me briefed on that one.
Do you have any clue what it stands for?
I do. I remember when we voted on the last time.
Well, that's, that's better than I was at one.
I think it'd actually be worth going. I'm kind of curious what the cost sharing is lately of a lot of this stuff. So it's probably fairly informative. We just, we'll, we'll see. Yeah. Okay. Now, on to 14.
Okay, this is the, the request to adopt a resolution of R-2022-14 to repair the need for emergency contracting procedures for all incentive rights of all incentive front row while having replacement project and appropriate $146,000 from water utility operation fund balance to account number 4657010-5500. And award a contract for emergency while having replacement projects. So a little background, if you look at the picture in the last page, you will see that.
That looks photoshopped.
This Saturday morning, there's a water leak shooting up on, on, on Front Row. Luckily, it went to the north, but it went freely. This is the third time within three, four months. The last time, the water went to the south. And then there's the cars, brand new car, and the side, and the mountain, it's an order of $98,000.
Oh, that would be a JPIA thing.
Did, did we get to keep the cars?
No, no, it is, the majority of cars were designed. So we have a contractor that just finished up the, the installation of water leak that was down on Lees Street, Cockwood. San Juan. And so we just, we're just gonna award a contract to them to repair this bus. If the City Council approved the, the contract tonight, it's starting this Friday, tomorrow. It's starting Friday. And I came in on Sunday, did design myself, and went up to bid on, on Monday and February. So, good question.
And that company was the lowest bidder?
Army?
That company was the lowest bidder?
No, what I did is I negotiated to use the cost for that last project. Use the cost, yes, go ahead.
Yes. In order to consider this item, the City Council has to add it to the agenda. You know, it was not on the posted agenda. So the council can do that, add an item to the agenda if you make a finding that there is a need for immediate action and that the matter came to the attention of staff after the agenda was posted. And that find, those findings have to be made by two-thirds of you. So, so you have to make that finding before we can even address.
I move that finding.
Second.
Second.
So we're in discussion now, right?
No, we gotta vote still.
There's a.
We can, that's what I, that's what I was saying.
Can it just be passed by affirmation, or do we need to do, we don't need to do the roll call, do we?
It doesn't have to be a roll call vote, but there has to be a vote.
I, I think there's some questions though that you have, right?
I do. The, that's not, you know, looking at the whole city, that's not that old a water main, is it?
Yes, I was surprised to, yes.
So do we have some sense of why we're having problems with that water main and?
Yes, sir. We, we found out after we dug it up. And, and usually the pipeline, when you put them in, you put in the plastic socks.
Okay.
Around the pipe.
Right.
To prevent corrosion.
Where, where the connection occurs?
No, the whole pipe.
The whole pipe.
So you have a steel pipe, and you put in sock, plastic socks over it.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and to prevent from corrosion. And this one, it didn't do it. So.
Can we hold, who, who, who built it? How long ago?
That was back in 86, before my time, so.
Was that during his administration?
Yeah.
So, at the beginning, at the beginning, that's why this is the third time. At the beginning, I wasn't going to replace it, because I thought, ah, it's just one time. But this is, this is the third time, and luckily, it went to the north, so it didn't damage the car again.
So what, what is the scope of the project?
The, the scope of a project is, I'm gonna put in a new eight-inch water main parallel to the existing line.
Yeah, how long? All along that Frontage Road?
Eight-hundred-ninety-one, ninety-five feet.
So they'll have to dig up the asphalt?
Yes, sir.
And do that?
Yes, sir.
And then replace it?
We, we just put a new one, replace an abandoned old one.
Yeah, replace the asphalt.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And we can use our water acquisition fund?
No, this is the, no, because I'm not interested in the pipe.
Why not?
I'm saving the water acquisition for one-point-six-million-gallon reservoir.
Ah, okay.
For the new development.
Okay, we still have to just vote on the.
Right, we're just.
The purpose of the emergency, which is what we should have done, and then ask questions before we approved it, correct?
Well, it's kind of a.
No, 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 we have to vote on it, adding it to the agenda first.
There's kind of a two-step. You have to first add it to the agenda. So that's what the motion made by Councilmember Rigsby was.
No, no, it's okay. So let's just vote to add it to the agenda, then we can vote on.
So the vote, the motion was to add this item to the agenda, because it was an item that occurred after the agenda was posted, and it does require an immediate attention, um, due to the fact that it was a major water line, um, leak that requires immediate attention. Um, Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Lenart? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Dupre?
Yes.
The item is, is added to the agenda.
Okay, so now we need a motion on whether or not to approve job spending.
And, um, Mr. Mayor, as part of that motion, the council has to also find that there is a need to make these repairs without sending the item out to bid. And that also has to be, that finding has to be determined by four-fifths of the city council.
It sounded like he did send it out to bid. I was a little confused on that myself.
Well, what we did is, we, I used the, uh, the contractor from the previous bid, and, and, and close to the same rate, because the, the cost went up a little bit. So.
Is that legitimate?
Yes, if the council makes the findings that there's an immediate need or an emergency to take action, such that you can't go out and do the formal bid process, where you send it out and wait for bids to be received.
So he is the lowest bidder from the last job?
So moved.
John Lenart second.
Madam Clerk.
The motion, the motion is, um, due to the emergency situation of this item, that there was not, um, time or time to go out to bid for this repair.
That's correct.
Um, to adopt resolution number R dash twenty-two-two-dash-fourteen, declaring the need for emergency contracting procedures for Auto Center Frontage Road Water Line Replacement Project, to appropriate one-hundred-and-forty-six thousand from water, the water u- utility operation fund balance into account number four-six-seven-zero-one-zero dash five-eight-five-zero-zero, then award the contract for Emergency Water Line Replacement Project to MCC Equipment Rentals of Ucaipa. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenart?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Dupre?
Yes.
This item was approved.
Okay, moving on to reports of council members.
All right, just got one slash two. All right, um, so as we know, last year we applied for Tree City. I saw the plaque in your office. I don't think we ever presented it or talked about it during the council meeting, so did want to.
Y- y- yes, yes. Well, we have a plaque for the Arbor. I forgot, CD, this was CD again.
Tree City, USA?
Yeah, Tree City, USA. Yes, and we did, we, and they brought it up, I can't remember where. But yes, you, you, you brought it up too, at, at the last one, the meeting that we are now, this Tree City, USA, and we have a, a, a plaque that we can put it up somewhere, so.
The plaque made out of wood?
Yes, and it was so bad, but they. And, and they print, they print Tree City, USA, and a piece of paper, and then they slip it in.
It's kind of like a culinary turducken.
And we also have a plaque too, so I have, I don't know where to put the plaque yet, so.
Cool. All righty, um, so on that same topic, so, um, a few residents brought up some trees that we have in the city that they wanted to preserve. Supposedly, these trees have been here for decades and decades. Doesn't have to be right now, but I wanted some kind of update on what.
Which one?
This one is two blocks that way.
Okay.
Yeah. Does it, not, not the exact, um, description that you're probably looking for, but I would have to look up the lane, uh, the street.
Okay.
Uh, but what I'm trying to fi- figure out is, what do we have overall that dictates on when we're taking out trees that are old, or?
Yes, yes, what happened to that, that tree is, is this last, um, rain, uh, that we have and strong wind, one of the branch fell off and, and hit part of the house. And, and the trees has been up, is it the ash trees on, on, right by your old house?
Tulip?
Tulip. And, and so, so the, the property owner who planted trees, well, it's kind of, he said, they planted trees, but in the ri- the city right away, and now they request us to city remove the tree, because it's lift up the sidewalk, lift up the curb. And so the ci- city was going to, uh, we hire an arborist to come out and take a look at it, and said, yes, you should remove it. But during that time, we found out that's a tree, there's a bird nesting up there. So we're gonna wait until the, no longer the season, and then we'll remove the trees and plant some other trees.
Got it.
Yes.
Is there anything that the residents there can do to save that tree?
Well, it's not in front of that person's house. The, the, the property owner would like to remove it, so that's why we went around and, and make sure that the property owner okay with, and they, they request us to re- remove it, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we, we plant a new one back for them.
Thanks. Second thing, um, fences. So I think I heard something about fences. Are we putting up new fences around the city?
We put out, but fencing over here by the, the library. Uh, what's happening is, if you notice it, the library have the, uh, kind of, uh, lower level, have a door coming out.
Mm-hmm.
To the front, to come up, so they have a ramp for the, well, that's a place where the homeless people hang out and, and you're named, right?
As long as they don't drop it in bags on the dais.
So, so what we did is, we put out a water line fence around that, and there'll be a gate at a location so that people still can get out from the library, but they cannot go back down.
Got it. Okay, so the root of that question is, um, some garden members had brought up that they keep garden members? The community garden member? Community garden?
Yes.
Right? Um, that they keep getting broken into. Um, so the question was if we can do something about better fencing. Um, a- as you know, we've had quite a few break-ins there, and the sheriff department has been kind enough to catch some of these perpetrators, but, um.
What, what do they steal in the community garden?
I mean, they have equipment there that, that can be costly.
They found it, one of my neighbors stole the, the wood.
The problem with that is, that fence belonged to the county flood control. It's a chain link fence that the county flood control put, uh, uh, along the channel. And, and, and so, and, and I, I. It's their fence, and we end up fixing it for them, and, and, so.
So can we get a better fence from them?
I could, I could ask, but I doubt it.
You're asking to gate the whole thing, though.
No, just the side, because the other part already has a fence.
Right, on the, on the north side, on the south side, adjacent to the, the street side, we put the wrought irons around it.
Yeah.
You can't use cutters to cut in.
The, uh, the flood control fence, so.
To steal a bird bath.
A- and we have, um, I, I know the street plan that you brought up, uh, do we have our, the city internet in that area?
Which street? Is it brand-new?
Van Louven?
No.
We have.
Wait, 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 Van Louven from Mountain View going west, yes.
Okay, so we do, because that is west of, uh.
Yes.
I- is there any possibility of putting security there, since we do have Wi-Fi, um, using that Wi-Fi do?
Going west or going east?
Going west, because we go off the loop. We, we come up.
Oh, for the.
Orange Grove, it's a big loop. We did that. No, no, it's, again, what we did is, we put in the security camera, and, and to do a fiber optic is, is very expensive. And again, we, we really already spent a lot of money on that, on that community garden, and, and so we put a couple of security camera on there already, so.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Dick, you wanted to add something about the bark beetles? No, that wasn't you?
I have one comment. Um, last night in the Parks and Recreation Committee, you did a very nice pictorial summary of the artwork we have and that we've recently added and are proposing to add. One of the city council meetings, I think it would be nice for people to be able to see that. It was a nice presentation, and, and I appreciate the artwork, especially coming down Barton, but other places too.
Yeah, we just completed, uh, uh, an art in front of the li- library.
Library, yeah.
So, if you have a chance to take a look at it.
Okay.
And then we would like to adjourn this meeting to April twenty-first, which is next Thursday. There will be a budget workshop with the city council and the budget committees for next fiscal year budget, so, in the community.
So do you have any other reports of officers? No. Okay, so we're going to adjourn till next Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, let's move on to the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any of the non-agendized items, please run forward, seeing nobody, uh, no new business, no chair member reports, reports of officers. What about the consent calendar? Okay, we have first.
Second.
And a second, Madam Clerk.
The motion is to approve the consent calendar on the housing authority agenda. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenart?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Dupre?
Yes.
The items were approved.
Thank you. We're gonna adjourn out of the housing authority and move into the successor agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any oral reports, public participation, non-agendized items, seeing nobody run for Milford? No, are you sure? Okay. Um, we'll move on to the consent calendar here.
Move it.
First and a second, Madam Clerk.
The motion is to approve the consent calendar items on the successor, successor agency. Councilman Jindal? Councilman Lenart?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Dupre?
Yes.
The items on the consent calendar were approved as a present.
Thank you very much. That concludes, um, the meeting of the successor agency, and that's all for tonight.